Good evening, everybody. My name is Paul Koch and the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. We've got lots of other stuff to do, but we open the meeting just with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we will get to business. So if everyone would please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America.
Republic.
Where we should stands.
One nation, under.
Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
And then, as I'm not going to speak for anybody, there is a delay, and I think we get three or four recitations of the Pledge of Allegiance out of that. So I am going to open with Governor Baker's notice, I guess. Everybody bear with me. It's about 12 single-spaced lines, very small font. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's July 2, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of North Andover website, www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting only, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their televisions by tuning into North Andover Cam, EV Comcast, Channel 99, or Verizon, Channel 28, or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive records of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings, please email your questions or your comments prior to or even during this meeting to j@battersby, A, B as in boy, A, T as in Tom, T as in Tom, E, R, S as in Sam, B as in boy, Y, at northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. A copy of the application and supporting documents are on file in the Zoning Board of Appeals, 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, and may be viewed on the Town of North Andover website at www.northandoverma.gov. Couple of other quick announcements, although it sounds obvious, this is a recorded meeting. We are over the telephone line, so we've got to make that announcement so everybody knows. And anybody who does not want to consent to being recorded on this telephone call should probably exit the call because the point of it is to be recorded. Next item I have for us is let's just do a roll call. I'm just going to go in order of the letterhead here. Me, I am here. Ellen McIntyre.
I'm present.
Ellen Kuscha. Not present, would you mark that? Jen Alexandria Jacobs.
Present.
I'm Fagan.
Present.
Michaeliss.
Present.
Steven Seidi.
Present.
Frank Killey.
Present.
Also on the phone for everybody is Edification Jennifer Battersby. She is the zoning administrator. We also have Paul Hutchins. He is the code enforcement officer and the building inspector. And we also have, golly, I didn't write down his last name, but certainly the bill from NACAM is recording proceedings. If anybody thinks I've forgotten anything, just yell it out because I'm just winging it. If nobody says anything, then I'm just going to carry on and say that the next item on the agenda is the acceptance of minutes for September 8, 2020. And that's last month, obviously. Is there any discussion? And if not, then is there a motion?
I don't move. I don't move to approve the minutes.
That was Ron making the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
That was Steve seconding. Motion made and seconded. I guess I'm going to have to call the roll, aren't I? Everybody was here last month, so just go the line. Ron Fagan.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ellen McIntyre.
Aye.
I'm an aye, but let's get an associate since Ellen's not here. We'll get a five-member vote. I'm just going to start at the top. Michael, Michaeliss.
Aye.
So we have five ayes, which means that the minutes are approved, 5-0. The next item on the, carrying, 369 Waverly Road. Mr. Kuscha is not in attendance. Therefore, Alexandria Jacobs is the acting clerk tonight. Ms. Jacobs, if you would kindly read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing remotely via conference call on Tuesday, October 6, 2020, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of the Winslow Drive Realty Group, LLC, Brian J. Boyle, Manager, for the property at 303 Chestnut Street, AKA Lot 1 Hillside Road, Map 098C, Parcel 0008, North Andover, Mass., 01845, in the R3 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to the Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, Section 195, Section 7.1A, for contiguous building area, CBA, in the R3 zoning district for the purpose of reconstructing a single-family home on a vacant lot. Specifically, applicant has requested CBA needing a relief variance of 5,718 square feet, i.e. 23%. The CBA proposed is 13,032 square feet, i.e. 52%, and the CBA required is 18,750 square feet, i.e. 75%. Applications supporting materials are available for review by appointment only at the Office of the Zoning Department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass., on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM by order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Koch Jr., S. Byer, Chairman.
Thank you, Alexandria. And now, just to kind of take attendance, I believe there could be others, but I've heard that there are at least two folks from the applicants that are on the line. Would you kindly introduce yourselves, your names and addresses or affiliations, please?
Brian Boyle, Winslow Drive Realty Group, LLC. My address is 24 Winslow Drive, Atkinson, New Hampshire.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Wait, there's an attorney on the line, is that right? Could be muted? Perhaps not. Mr. Boyle, are you expecting Mr. Byers to?
Yes, he.
Google mute is star six to undo, just in case.
Must have, because he said a few minutes ago he was on.
He did, he did.
Hello?
Is that Mr. Attorney Byers?
Okay, try this again. I sent him the text.
Right. We'll give a second look. This technology stuff doesn't always work for everybody. Perhaps Mr. Byers is just a little bit, he's as old as I am, so he's a dinosaur. That's not facile.
Am I correct in understanding that he said he was on like five minutes ago?
I heard him say he was here. But now when we need him on the record, he's hiding.
Yeah, there you go.
I just got a text from him. He said he's having trouble logging in, but he is trying to log in now. And I'm return texting, asking him if he wants my nine-year-old. He knows how to do this stuff.
Well, I appreciate you waiting and your patience here.
Fortunately, either fortunately or unfortunately, this is the only thing on the agenda, so I am nothing but excited to get this over and through, so I'm certainly prepared to wait. If we had other items on the agenda, we'd probably just hop ahead. But this is a nice, clean, easy one.
Yeah, and the Patriots game was last night, so.
Hello?
Is that Byers?
Oh, my God. I've been on for 45 minutes, and then you couldn't hear me. Sorry about that.
Can you hear me now? That's life and the fascinating. Yeah, we've got you, Mr. Byers.
Oh, I apologize.
Kindly just introduce yourself, name and address, and/or affiliation to the applicant, please.
Yes, it's Attorney Richard Byers. My address is 807 Turnpike Street, North Andover.
All right. Thank you very much, and you're representing the applicant, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, we've got a handful of materials, but we always open by saying the floor is yours. Attorney Byers, tell us what's going on with this.
Okay, sure. A brief history of this property, a lot of you would probably know the area. It's right at the corner of Hillside and Chestnut. For the longest, for many years, going back to 1950, there was a red cape there, and a lot of people knew it as the Busby House. So back in 2016, we had the red cape of the Busby House, and it was situated on three separately divided parcels of land. Then the Busbys and my client worked out a deal to redevelop the site. And at the time, went to the planning board and in conjunction and with Conservation, decided that two lots would make more sense over there. Did get a plan approved by the planning board back in 2016. The plan is on record. Then proceeded to build, actually then went to Conservation, and you could see the Conservation land, everything has been approved by Conservation. Mr. Boyle went ahead and part of the order of conditions built a nice stone wall to separate the buffer zone from the rest of the lot. And on Lot 2, proceeded to build a house that a lot of people probably would recognize. It's a large, beautiful gray house that was built on Lot 2. Then, moving forward, we went back, Mr. Boyle went back to get a building permit on Lot 1, and unfortunately now, after the Conservation approval and everything, and the fact that now we're not using the buffer zone as part of your contiguous buildable lot, it's a large, extremely large lot. It's a lot size of 31,196 square feet, which is way more than the 25,000 required. We are short now with the contiguous buildable lot because we are not including the buffer zone in the calculation. So I've been working with, I worked with Gene Enright, and I've been working with Paul Hutchins, who's been very helpful, and we thought the best course of action would be to try to get a variance so we could go ahead and build a lot, build this property, build a lot out and build a house on it. And I did want to point out that the area that Mr. Boyle is looking to build or have built on would be the exact location where the previous Busby House was located from 1950 to about 2016. So that's where we are at this point.
What, are, do you need to be before any other boards on this? Did I miss that?
No. Nope, it's, we have a planning board, already endorsed planning board, a plan that's been recorded, and Conservation, there's an order of conditions from going back to when the lots were developed. So Conservation has already, like I said, they've already approved these lots, and again, Mr. Boyle's fault, everything in the order of conditions that was required, including building stone walls. So, no, it's just zoning.
If I might ask, this is Mike List, if I might ask, the current building that is there, that is also within the 100-foot buffer zone, correct? Like, I'm looking at the lines, and I don't think I have a map that explicitly says it, but it looks like it should be.
Yes. Correct, Brian, right? Brian?
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But at the time that house was built, I don't know, I don't know if it's a different interpretation of the bylaw, there was no, there was no contiguous buildable lot issue on that one.
Okay.
Again, just to point out, I mean, the lot size itself, as you could see on the plan, 31,196 square feet, no other variances we're asking for, there's no other variances needed. It fits nicely in that lot.
And for clarity and for the record, looking at the proposed plan and the building is, at least some of the building is going to be in the 100-foot buffer zone, again, for clarity on the record, there is no relief needed for that, is that correct?
That's correct.
So therefore, if we're not really, and again, this is just for amplification purposes, because every time we get into buffer zones, I automatically think that we're messing with wetlands, and in this case, we are not. The reason that we are, the reason that this application, any area inside the buffer zone is not included in this A calculation. So we have enough land, we just don't have enough available land, by virtue of the definitions or vagaries of the wetlands bylaw.
Correct, that's correct. But yeah, we won't be building anywhere near the wetlands.
And this is me metaphorically looking up and down the table, encouraging any board members with comments, questions, or concerns. Feel free to jump in.
So this is Ron. I just want to make sure that my understanding is correct, and then I probably will ask a couple of questions that I should know the answers to. There was sufficient building area before there was a change in the laws regarding wetlands, is that correct? So the lot was conforming until a different law changed.
Maybe Paul can jump in. Hutchins, I believe that's the case, yeah. Again, with the other property, it wasn't an issue, you know, the other lot. So, in fact, the engineer who drew the plan, actually, the plan that was endorsed by the planning board showed, they thought they had 30,407 contiguous buildable lot because he included the buffer zone. But if you take the buffer zone out, then we're short.
Right, but the buffer zone, if I read the package correctly, the buffer zone regulation came in afterwards, and that is what made the lot non-conforming. Prior to that, the lot was conforming, it had sufficient square footage.
That's my understanding.
The package also said that there are any number of cases where a building has been done similar to this, where it is on the buffer zone. I don't take that as a matter of fact unless somebody can tell me, like, we're there. I don't know if that's true.
Want me to take a shot at this, Rick?
Yeah.
Well, I'll go out on a limb and tell you that's 80 to 90% of what's going on in the town of North Andover is in that case. Because what the law we're referring to happened in 1998. So you have several projects that that's just been the norm, if you will, the generally accepted practice, that the contiguous buildable area is calculated by the surveyors or whatever, and engineers. That's, in fact, this gentleman, Don Ho, has done several projects in North Andover in 19, since 1998. So I don't have a list of them off the top of my head, but there's nothing unusual about this in terms of where the house is being located. And actually, the lot we have in front of the board tonight is larger than it was before we went to the planning board. So we made the lot bigger, which we didn't, we just, it just made sense because there was three separated lots, three taxed, they were individually taxed, but they were, my opinion, they were kind of tight, but, so we got rid of the lot in the middle and gave some land to the lot to the right and lots to the left, just made two nicer lots.
And this house, Brian, will be in the same location as the Busby House.
You'll be in the same location as the Busby House, and again, when we went through, sorry, in your packets, the previous building inspector, right, wrong, or different, we actually, Phil Busby pulled a demo permit and said, hey, just, you know, I've been around for a few years, and this is Phil, but sometimes historically, some boards will still, inspectors will say, well, listen, you got to leave the wall up to grandfather's zoning. Well, that wasn't deemed necessary when we pulled the demo permit, so, okay, we didn't leave the wall up. So, you know, to help Rick Byers on this board, all I'm going to do is put a house there that's been there since late 40s.
All right, forgive me if I shouldn't know these things, but first, what's an A-N-R?
I'm sorry, what? A-N-R?
A-N-R.
Oh, the A-N-R plan from the planning board? It's approval not required.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And the second one, just from a conservation standpoint, if somebody can answer this, it would help me. You have the no-build area near the wetlands, and then you've got this buffer zone, which is another 50 feet. So therefore, what is the conservation risk of building in the buffer zone when you all still have the no-build zone?
Well, you don't, I don't want to speak for conservation, but that is pretty typical, if you will, that most towns have the clearly 25-feet no-disturb zone, and then North Andover, what they have, which I think is pretty typical of most places I've worked, that's out of protection. They want, they will call off 50 feet off the edge of wetlands. It's just out of protection for the wetlands, and anything that is within 100 feet of a wetland is within the approval and requirements of a hearing to Conservation. That's why we had to go to Conservation first, and it's clearly within the jurisdiction. You cannot do anything without Conservation approval if you are going to do anything within the 100-foot buffer zone. But routinely, you will see, you will build in the buffer zone, and I've never seen anyone build 25, within 25 feet of a wetland.
No.
So it's an insurance policy, basically?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that engagement, Ron. Again, looking up and down the table, is there anyone from the board?
This is Ellen. Hi, Rick, how you doing?
Good, Ellen, how are you?
Quick question, this is like, I went by this last week, this is such an odd lot. Just to clarify, the entrance and the address is on Hillside Road, correct?
If you went by it, Ellen, you will notice there was a.
Bulldozer.
That actually belongs to a resident. He's, I guess he plows to state police, and I said, yeah, I'm not doing anything, you can leave there right now, it's not mine. But anyhow, you'll see, there's a break in the stone wall that will be the, there's actually two breaks in the stone wall, but the one closest, let's say the larger break, is where the driveway will be. But yes, the address will be Hillside Road. The Busby House was pretty cornered, and we're just keeping it on, everything on Hillside Road, and I believe in the town of North Andover, I think it's the Water Department that actually assigns the addresses. So I don't know what the formal address is going to be. I know that the house I built next door was actually 40 Hillside Road, so I don't really know the address. I keep calling it Lot 1 because I don't know the street address. It has water and sewer and natural gas because there was an existing house there. It's already there.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the board? All right, taking my cue from the silence, if anybody is muted and scrambling to get back, don't feel free to interrupt me. I'm not going to show, go through the formality. I'm not closing anything, but start introducing a little public comment. We got an email from the Devens, who are, golly, at 311 Chestnut Street. I'm just going to read it in its entirety relatively quickly, just so that I can say it's been read into the record, and then kind of ask the applicant to comment if they would. So this is from, looks like Joanne Devon. As a follow-up to our conversation today, our question applies to the condition of the lot in general. We have no objections to building an approved home on the lot, but would like to see the property cleaned up ASAP. As neighbors to the Busbys for many years, we were used to a scenic view next door, and when the property was sold to Mr. Boyle, we appeared at the hearing in favor of the construction of two homes which should have been finished a couple of years ago. The first home went up quickly and is a great asset to the neighborhood, but this second lot has been allowed to deteriorate and become totally overgrown, and essentially creating an eyesore with multiple trees down along the brook with stumps that go back to the original clearing for construction next door, all of which are very unattractive and serve as a haven for wild animals. And will the lot be cleared? Regards, Devon, 311 Chestnut Street. So if I could throw those comments to the applicant and see if they have a reaction.
My reaction, quite frankly, is I will not review it. What they're referring to is, well, first of all, the lot is cleared, it's, right now it looks overgrown, so they had the pleasure of living beside the Busbys for years, and the place was always as groomed to the max. And we really thought that we were going to have a house built there a while ago, and whether it was, I live in this world that I'm subject to market conditions, and then in the past 12 months, we've had this little permitting issue going back and forth where another North Andover builder had interest in building there, and that fell apart over permitting. And I have another North Andover family who would like to build there now, which I will not enter into my third contract because without a building permit, I just cannot keep going. But I will clearly, as the house looks next door, is how it will be left, and hopefully it'll be soon and later, which.
Yeah, I was going to say that, right.
Yeah, and to me, it's, but I agree with that family, and I can assure you, that's how we usually leave all that job, so it's, I'm sure, pretty comforting for them. So I apologize for her, and I will go out of my way to apologize the next time I see them, but that was never my intention, to leave it like that.
So thank you for the commentary. I certainly appreciate the contrast between a finished lot next door and certainly the Busbys when they were there, lot, and then certainly mowing their lawn every weekend better. I fully appreciate that we do live in the real world, and delays occur ordinarily. There are delays that are unexpected and plain for and probably unpreventable. So with that in mind, I guess I would press on behalf of the Devens, there can always be more delays. Can we get some cleaning up of the lot to make it, I'm not asking for a country club look here, Mr. Boyle, I'm not looking for that at all, something, can we get some efforts to clear, I hear you loud and clear that the lot is clear, can we get rid of the overgrown condition?
Absolutely. Be happy to.
Thank you very much for that.
Can I just ask, can I add on that, Paul? So if you get a permit, are you going to be building this year?
Yes.
So would that clear up the lot if you stop? So would that clear up the lot if you stop building?
Yes.
Yeah. Like, it, it'll look like the house next door.
Not right away, I mean, but I'm just saying, I, I think that neighbors' concerns are it's overgrown, it's been, it looks like it's been abandoned pretty much. I mean, it looks like it's an empty lot that has been walked away from. And I understand that's the issue of like, how clean it up, but if you do receive a permit, you're gonna start obviously building before, you know, get your foundation in so you can work through the winter. Is, is, is that my understanding?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that, all of that is a, is a fair understanding in, but I'm just trying to ensure, and I, I think that everybody is, is hearing it. You know, there's, there's the what if, you know, the, the what if we don't get to this, or if, what if, you know, the second wave of COVID hits, or what if we're attacked by aliens? So in the interim, in order to cover the what-if scenarios, uh, we're just getting it from the app to, to do some clearing of the overgrown, um, conditions.
Exactly.
That will clearly happen. That will happen.
Thank, thank you very much for that. So again, look again, metaphorically, looking up and down the table, any other comments, questions?
Yeah, Paul, this is Steve, and, uh, just, I need a couple points clarified for me. So this one hundred-foot buffer zone. Now, uh, the buffer zone starts in the wetlands. And so is, uh, is the, uh, issue that technically the buffer zone should start after the wet, the, uh, the conservation, the wet, uh, the, the wetlands, is, I'm looking for clarification, explanation of this, and then I have one other explanation point, too.
That, that, that is not, that is not the issue, that you, uh, that it's very routine, that very typical, actually, that construction happens in the buffer zone, which is why you have to go to conservation and get the permission. If, if the applicant, whether it's myself or anyone else, is doing work outside the buffer zone, they don't even have to go to conservation, it's outside the jurisdiction. That's the sole reason of conservation, to control what happens within a hundred feet of the, of wetlands.
Right, and that's, there's, again, between the no build and the buffer, the first fifty feet, you can't build anything, but between fifty and a hundred, you can.
Correct.
Okay, well, then, the other point I'd like clarified is there's been a reference made to some bylaw changes. Now, as I look at in the packet, the chronology of the history of the property. The history of the property, the first entry that I see is December seventeenth, two thousand fifteen. And the reference to changes, uh, bylaws or whatever, wherever they took place, I saw a reference to the eighties and to the nineties, and so I'm just curious, how does that have any bearing if this started in the, in two thousand fifteen?
I, I, I think it was more or less an interpretation of the bylaw that kind of changed.
But those interpretation changes would have been, I mean, there was reference, again, three different, two in the nineties and one in the eighties. I mean, so would that interpretation not have preceded the, the beginning of this work?
Don't understand the question.
Yeah, Paul, uh, yeah, do you want, Brian?
I don't understand the question.
Oh. Yeah, I'm not. I, I, I think there were, um, previous buildings or properties developed and built where the buffer zone was not, uh, was included in the contiguous build of a lot that were developed. I, I'm not sure if I answered the question. I might not know the answer.
Well, I was just, okay, and again, I'm, uh, just trying to, when I, with reference made to this interpretation, I'm trying to understand what came first, the chicken or the egg, or it seems to me like whatever change has occurred, has taken place before this, the acquisition of the lot and the building began. It doesn't look to me like there was anything that has occurred after the fact. Now, I'm not making a judgment, I'm bringing this up to say, am I interpreting this correctly?
Uh, I think you are.
Okay, thank you.
I don't, I don't.
So I'm, this is, this is Paul, I'm always challenged by timelines and historical, um, you know, the, the ins and outs of historical interpretations. I think that in, in this case, there, they, they may be a little bit of a red herring. I'm, I'm kinda, kinda saying that out loud to both the applicant and to Steve. Uh, because I think the historical, whatever the historical interpretations have been, the current interpretation we have is that the applicant needs to be before the board in order to get a variance of that CBA. You know, so that they could, due to CBA, the, the CBA being reduced by the buffer zone, so there's not enough CBA. And I believe, whether, whether the historical interpretations that were different or not, today we have the code and the interpretation before us, I don't really feel like an interpretation rather than mere reading. Um, the, a reading of the code suggests that we need, this property needs a variance for CBA because there's not enough CBA with, you know, with the size of the buffer zone area here. But that's, I think that's a long way of saying that if we're trying to examine the history of interpretations or history of the code, we, we may be spinning our wheels a little bit because that's not necessarily where we are, and none of us are back in the nineties or eighties, there's not a lot of relevance there. What goes today is that, um, we have an application variance regarding CBA.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I hear silence, I'll look up and down. I, I wish, sure wish we were all in the same room, it's easier with the visuals. Again, looking up and down the table, and the additional thoughts perhaps on that issue or others. Hearing none, perhaps I'll ping, uh, Jen, our zoning administrator and ask, hey Jen, do we have any other public comments that have come, email or otherwise?
Yes, we received one email, uh, from a William Di- DiAdamo. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, his email states, well, it sounds like the new house is going to go on the location of the old house. What is the difference in size between the new one and the old one, and is the new one going to be substantially larger?
Thank you, Jen, and thank, thank you to the questioner. Mr. Byers? Mr. Boyle?
No, it, it'll be actually smaller.
Can you, can you tell, tell us all what the, what the size of the, the new house will be?
Yeah, it, the new house, the, with the footprint is close to four thousand feet, the house next door is like forty-six hundred square feet.
Who, wha- what is the former house?
Well, there were three buildings there, so I had to say.
Are they talking about, are they talking about the Busby House?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As I look at the, at the diagram, it looks as though the, the new house is at least two times the size of the Busby House. That's my visual looking at this, uh, diagram.
So I don't, the Busby House was a cape, correct, Brian?
That's correct, and, and then there was a second detached building at the Busby House in the same area.
Are you talking about the garage?
Yeah.
I don't really know if I would count the garage as a living space in terms of the old dwelling to the new dwelling.
If, if, if you're in a butter, you're concerned about number of buildings and overall footprint, I, they have this similarity, but, uh, I'm not in here looking for relief of that, um, and I think I can, I don't think, I don't think it gets down to the square footage of what this is.
I, I think the question more is someone's used to a house being twenty-five hundred square feet, and they want to know the difference of excluding all the garages and other buildings, accessory buildings on the lot. The ab- old house was twenty-seven hundred square feet as opposed to the new house being four thousand square feet. I think that might be more of the question. Instead of, um, going around or if we add up all the buildings, I think it's more of the residential house itself, the visual look at the house. And you're comparing it to the new house that's being next door, which is forty-seven hundred square feet. I think what the question was is what was there as compared to what's going to be there. That's my interpretation anyways.
Yeah, I guess, I guess it's gonna be larger because economics, that's why myself and others have not been able to do small hustle like that in thirty-some odd years.
Yeah, so it's, you already had, it's about four thousand square feet, and the Busby House, I don't know what that was, a typical cape, I believe, right? I know, small, yeah.
So, so basically, I think the, the question is, so it's gonna be twice the size of the house that was there, kind of, or three, yeah, two ti- two times the size of the house that was there originally. Five fifteen with the house that's next to it.
If it, it, it'll be in, it will be in keeping with the houses next door, other houses in the area. And it's probably gonna be close to twice the size of that, you know.
All right, well, thank, thank you for that. Thank you, Jen, for the question. Jen, are there any others?
No other.
Thank you very much. All right, metaphorically, looking up and down the, at the board, asking if there are any other comments, questions, ideas, or whether or not we should be doing two deliberations?
I've, I've got nothing else.
I'm set to move forward.
Excuse me, Paul, we just got a couple that came in.
Oh, thank, thank you, Jen. Would you, would you mind rattling, rattling the first one off?
Sure, no problem. Um, so William DiAdamo again says, so the footprint will be the same, but now multiple stories. So it will look significantly different. So that's his question.
Well, yeah, it, it's a cape going to a, more of a colonial. So, yeah.
And to, to be clear, for the board, the applicant and the questioner, the uh, footprints are not identical. So the new house is going in a, a pretty much approximately the same, there is going to be some overlap, but, but just to be clear with the question.
Correct.
Footprints are not identical.
Co- correct, this will be facing Hillside. As opposed to in the corner, the way the Busby House was.
And how many, how many stories is the new home?
Uh, it, it's either gonna be a story and a half or a two-story. So it's a cape, so it considers story and a half, colonial is considered two-story.
All right. Thank you. Anything else from the board on that question from the public? Seeing and hearing none, uh, Jen, I think you said that there might have been a couple that came in, is there a second?
Yes, there is another question. Um, it's a comment from Lynn Wenzel, and she's at two ninety-four Chestnut Street. Um, she says, I'm the neighbor across the street at two ninety-four Chestnut. The Busby House was nine hundred square feet. A four thousand square foot house is much larger than the previous house, four times larger.
I, I, it was only nine, I, I finished upstairs, correct?
Excuse me, I respectfully disagree because the, what that person is missing is the Busby House was an unfinished upstairs house. So it was nine hundred square feet downstairs without the, the room off the back. So.
Yeah, it was an unfinished upstairs on a cape.
I don't understand what this has to do with my application.
It, it may not have much to do, uh, with the application, Mr. Boyle, however, whenever, whenever anybody comes in for relief, everything is on the table.
Okay.
So with that, I think what I'm hearing is that the Busby House may have been a, uh, two-story cape. This is going to be a two-story colonial. The square footage of the Busby Home is, you know, of, of, of some unknown quality. We only, perhaps only have, uh, the first floor as livable square footage because the second floor may have been unfinished. Uh, so therefore, in that regard, we have two two-story buildings. We do not know what the delta is between the two square footages, other than it is going to be some multiple, probably, I think if we all look each other in the eye, we can say that it's going to be at least two, uh, twice, the new home is going to be at least twice as big as the old home. And I'm happy to be called out if people have different ideas of that. Being and hearing none, approach to the board, is there any other comments, uh, or questions regarding this question of the square footage or the size? Being and hearing none, Jen, is there, is there a third, or is that, uh, exhaust the emails?
That's all, no more.
Thanks so much. Then again, returning to the metaphor, looking up and down the table to the board, if there are no further comments, questions, concerns or ideas, then perhaps we should close this element of the hearing and move to deliberations.
Well, I will, I will, yeah, I will move to close, close this one.
Like Ron made the motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank, thank you, Ron, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Motion made and seconded, I need to call the roll on all the votes. Uh, Ron?
Aye.
Alexandria?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
I'm an aye, and then we're gonna move over to Phil Allen's slot. Looks like, uh, Mike, you're next, what do you think?
Aye.
Thank you, five ayes to close public comment. Now we'll move to board deliberations. Looking up and down the table now, asking the board to speak freely. Any thoughts from y'all?
So, I, you know, my, I don't know if my interpretation is the way that the people who wrote these buffer laws intended. Uh, but it's certainly sort of the way that I view this, is that there's sort of two pieces to this. One is is this house too close to other houses based on what the zoning was intended for? And then the second is, is this house too close or, you know, too compressed onto, uh, wet conservation land? And I think the first one is pretty straightforward in the sense that the, the spacing between this house and the other houses around it is not any meaningfully amount less than, than what the other houses have. Uh, and so from, from that, I feel like it sort of fits in with the intent of the zoning. Um, the second question is whether or not it's, you know, the property is sort of too small for the amount of conservation land that is proximate to it. Uh, I'm a little less clear on that, except that the other house that, you know, was part of this multi-watt conglomerate uh, is already much closer to the conservation land. And that the, and also that the Conservation Commission seems to have no problem with this construction. Um, and so those two factors sort of tilt me in a particular direction.
Thank you, thank you, Michael. Any, any thoughts on that from the members of the board?
Well, I, Alexandria, I think just because the other house may not have run into the same problems that this one is, and the fact that it may go more into conservation shouldn't almost set the decision of what you do with this one, because I think we look at every single issue that comes before us separately, and the prior one didn't, so I don't know if that, if I give that much weight. I'm also not sure how we deal with the seventy-five percent not being met.
I'll, I'll offer a couple of quick thoughts. The first one is on, Michael, on your, your first issue, um, regarding, you know, the, the distance between the homes, it's just fair to, to point out that we're not, there, there are no setback, no setback issues, no setback, um, you know, problems whatsoever. So there was, certainly, I'd like, everything's on, everything's on the, on the table, but as far as goes, all the setbacks are satisfied. Um, on the, the second issue, um, is the same thing that I, 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 this a little bit, too. Like, what is, what is this application actually all about? Why are we here? And I, I'm not gonna pretend to be expert, other than to share that I got comfort because if this were, as the applicant were pointing out, if this were in the actual build zone, having a, a problem, so we'd require the board on the planet. where the board on the planet. On the other hand, this is, uh, just in the buffer zone. Now, just, I, when I say just, I'm, I'm kind of putting air quotes around it. Such that the buffer zone is not, does not require the same amount of, um, I guess, protection, guilty uh, to, you know, the don't disturb area, don't build anything here. The, the, the buffer is, hey, everybody take a look at this for, for a little while, you know, that's not gonna be as of right, we're a hundred feet from a wetland. Um, so let's take a look. The code is not saying no, 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 which is what the no disturb zone is saying, what the no build zone is saying. What the code is saying is, hey, let's pause, let's make sure that in totality of circumstances, we're not running into a problem. So in, in my mind, we are, the, this structure, the proposed structure is, is, you know, i- in relative terms, miles away from the no disturb zone, and is comfortably far from the no, no build zone. I mean, we would only really be talking about those two if the structure were proposed to be actually breaching the line and going into the no build or no disturb. Here in the zone, so it's worth taking, taking a, a look at the surrounding area, look at the surrounding circumstances um, to determine, uh, how much is in jeopardy here? And if somebody who wrote the code, which is what we are all endeavoring to follow, if somebody thought that there should not be a structure in a in the, in the, in the buffer zone, then that's what they would have written. However, the experts way back when, whether they be political experts or scientific experts or a merger of both, in their wisdom, yeah, you can build in the buffer zone, you just gotta be, you, you gotta be talking to folks. And in this case, the buffer zone is merely, merely a calculation for contiguous building area, which is not a, not a huge threat, contiguous building areas to make sure that we don't, uh, as, as Michael was pointing out, we don't want to put too many houses in too close a, a, a spot, kind of thing. And here, we have a relatively big lot, thirty-one thousand square feet. Uh, it's just that the, the buffer, the code defines CBA as eliminating the buffer zone from the calculation. Anyway, that's a, that's, when I say anyway, makes it sound like I actually made a point. I didn't make a point. All I did was kind of share my rambling thoughts on what this actually, what the buffer might be and how it, uh, interplays with the application. And in my estimation, uh, as unlearned as it may be, in my estimation, this project is kind of falling comfortably within any tolerances that I would have for the protection of the because if we're, we're not really, we're not disturbing anything directly, nor are we disturbing, you know, the two, the more protective zones. We're only in a zone that is saying, hey, let's take a look. Anyway, I'll, I'll shut up. Thank you all for enduring me.
Hey, Paul, or to the, uh, all the board members. So just as I look at the proposed plan, and I, and again, I'm fixated on this buffer zone, but the reason I'm looking at it is, it looks like about ten percent of the buffer zone is, is overlapping with the proposed dwelling. So I, it, it's a hundred feet, but I mean, it looks like it's ninety feet to me. And again, I don't know the ramifications of it, but I'm, again, I'm looking at it from an interpretation perspective. Am I interpreting this correctly?
I'm not sure how to answer that, except the, the buffer zone is, um, you know, it's, you know, it's a zone, so it starts at fifty feet from the wetland and ends a hundred feet from the, from the wetland. And the second you go even a square inch into the buffer zone, I think it's a square inch. I think the second you cross into the zone itself, then the conversation begins. Whether it's, whether the structure is entirely in the buffer zone, or whether it, you know, some small corner of it is, is in the buffer zone. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're talking about it. We're examining in those, the totality of circumstances, kind of thing, again. And I, I don't know if I answered what your actual issue is. I'm, I'm mostly just answering my reflexive response.
Paul, this is Frank. My, my understanding, uh, when they do anything in the zone, it's not just, let's take a look, but it also allows the Conservation Commission to place conditions on it to, to protect the wetlands for any, any impact of, um, you know, starting to get close to the, uh, actual, um, line of the wetland. So I don't know if that, there were conditions placed on this by the Conservation Commission, but, um, they would have had that opportunity to do so.
That is, that's a, a sound point, and, and naturally, if there were any conditions, then the applicant would need to be uh, satisfying those conditions or complying with those conditions. Silence invites a voice. Uh, if anybody has any, any thoughts, whether they're responsive to the most recent point, or whether they want to take another direction, please jump right in, folks.
So I would agree with your comments, Paul, and Michael's comments. Um, you know, I, I don't, I don't, I have a comfort level about this, given, um, you know, the discussion that has occurred. It also somewhat reminds me of, again, if I have the timelines correctly, it reminds me of a, a, a previous situation that we had where because of the timing of different, you know, uh, in this case, a conservation guideline, a conservation rule, previously with zoning rule, you actually inhibit somebody's use of the land because of the timing of what occurred. And, um, you know, so, so that always struck me as kind of an issue of fairness. In this case, I think looking upon, you know, what they're planning to do, I think there's, there's not a big issue to me, particularly if conservation has already kind of looked at it and blessed it.
Thank you for the perspective, Ron.
Uh, Paul, I just wanted to add, you know, for, for the residents, I think what, what they're seeing is, oh, so you had a smaller house, and now you put in a huge house on a lot, and I don't think they're understanding the timeline of, well, why can they do this, and how can they do this? So I, I think there might need be more clarification, like because of the timeline in the building and how it was approved, that this is the reason why, um, they're coming here for it. You know, I, I, I think as a, as a, as an abbot, I'm looking and saying, oh, this was a quaint little house there, and now it's gonna be a huge, you know, another McMansion, nothing of a McMansion, but it, I mean, technically four thousand square feet is, it's a, it's a big house, it's not a ginormous house, will it fit on the lot? It's not compared to what was there, but I think, again, if, if you look at the timeline and why this was done and how this was done this way, I think it might clarify the direction of the, of the application.
Am I hearing an, an action item from you, Ellen?
No.
Okay. Good, good at action items.
It's, yes, I am, but I, um, would you like me to have an action item? I'm not prepared to have one, though. If you, if you talk amongst yourselves for a minute or two, I might be able to.
I'll look up and down the table and, and, uh, ask anybody on the board, any further comments, questions, or concerns?
None here.
I'm good.
I'll watch that.
All right, I'm hearing a lot of contented, full of information, board members at the end of deliberations. I'm happy to, Ellen, take a, take a, a five-minute recesses. That certainly didn't buy you much time.
No, I can get it, I can get it together. Two more seconds.
All right, then, while, while you do that, perhaps if we were in, in the same room, I would be giving an elbow to Ms. Jacobs and saying, Ms. Jacobs, I'm sure there's going to, not I'm sure. Let's plan for a motion.
I was just gonna ask about what you would like me to include.
I, I, you know, just, just, I think just stacking up the, uh, you know, all of, all of the exhibits that the applicant, at, at a minimum, the plans.
Okay, so I don't have to do the letter of authorization or the abbot's list?
No.
I thought, I thought you were having me do that, Paul.
Ms. Jake, Ms. Jake is the acting clerk. She read the notice.
Okay, um, so the plan, I don't need the deed.
Yeah, you do not need.
History of property can go, right?
Yeah, you know, let's, let's recite that. Recite the.
The recent history of property?
Yeah.
Okay, um.
The Donahue Survey. Yep.
Both of them or just the one?
Yeah, let's do both.
The twenty-fourth and a twenty-fifth, okay.
Yeah, let's do both of those.
Um, then the plan of land for North Andover?
Yeah.
I'm assuming the permit to build, we don't have the list?
Correct.
And then, do you want the building specification summary, or?
You can release those.
Okay, so we can dissolve that, I think.
Skip the license. Skip the rating, skip.
What about the ASB Design Group LLC?
I am not sure what went to, oh, there it is.
It's after all the drawings?
Yeah, all, yes, and any drawing, we should certainly list.
Okay, and, it looks like I have duplicate letters. Okay, so the notice, the variants can go, the plan, recent history, Donahue letters. That's plain and that's plain, okay. Does Ellen have anything she wants to throw in? Or do I need to buy more time? I can look through this again.
Good teamwork there, Alexandria.
No, I think, I think I have everything. Um, the only thing I didn't, hate to mention was the Winslow Drive Realty Group, that one, that letter from September tenth. Letter of thought. Um, no, you don't need that with, uh, letting, um, between guys.
That was the authorization letter.
Yeah, okay. Anything else I have, you have?
Awesome, and we will be, um, are proposing a, a condition regarding a clearing of the overgrowth. Probably when we get the applicant's line, I'm gonna ask for, I should have asked way back when we were talking about it, but I omitted it until I started thinking about the decision. And if we're gonna add a condition, then I'd like to put some kind of a timing element to, uh, the cleaning up of the overgrown conditions. Have no more decisions, and why don't we come out and I can ask the applicant that question, but if we do have any more deliberations or comments, questions, or concerns, seeing and hearing none, then I will ask Mr. Bayers, uh, Mr. Boyle, regarding the clearing of the overgrown conditions or cleaning up, clearing sounds so complete. The cleaning up of, or addressing the overgrown conditions, kind of a timeline, would you be comfortable with putting in the decision?
Thirty days, is that okay?
That seems ration, rational to me.
I'm sorry, what was that date?
Within thirty days.
Thirty days, okay.
But then, you know, then we'll have to do some arithmetic regarding the, uh, you know, the filing dates and all that kind of stuff. Thirty days, how about we say, um, November, add twenty, how about November, November twentieth? I think it takes us ten or fourteen days to get this thing out the door, and then the applicant's gotta get it recorded and all that stuff, and then kind of the clock starts running.
Why don't, Paul, why don't you do the thirty days after filing?
Thirty days after filing.
Instead of putting us just a, a definite date on, so if you do the thirty days after filing, I, I think you might be safe.
Okay.
Are we sure? Do we want to change one more time?
Uh, no.
Okay.
With that, again, look up, this is last, last chance, board members, uh, down the table, any other comments? Otherwise, I will ask for a motion. Ms. Jacobs, how about a motion?
I make a motion to approve the variance submitted by the Winslow Drive Realty Group LLC, Brian J. Boyle, manager, for the property located at three oh three Chestnut Street, also known as Lot One Hillside Road, map zero nine eight C, parcel zero 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 eight, North Andover, map oh one eight four five, in the R three zoning district. Um, pursuant to section one ninety-five dash seven dot one A for contiguous, contiguous building areas, CBA in the R three zoning district for the purpose of reconstructing a single-family home on a vacant lot, specifically applicant requested CBA needing a release variance of seven, five thousand seven hundred and eighteen square feet. And the CBA required, required is eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. Referencing the proposed plan for three oh three Chestnut Street done by the Donahue Survey Inc. Company dated September eighth, twenty twenty. The recent history of property going from nineteen fifty to August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. The Donahue Survey Inc. Letter dated August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. Donahue Survey Letter, Inc. Letter dated August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. The plan of land done by the Donahue Survey Inc. dated December seventh, two thousand fifteen. And the plan by ASB Design Group LLC dated four sixteen, twenty twenty. With the condition that the applicant clear up any overgrow within thirty days after filing.
I, I may have been shuffling papers. Alexandria, did you do the, um, uh, the, the, for the home as well, the Amanda Robashaw?
I'm sorry, the what?
Amanda Robashaw, designer, A one, three.
I don't have that in my package, so I did not include that.
Ellen, do you have, do you have anything?
I do, I have them right here, so I, can I just add to the, um, decision of the, um, Amanda L. Robashaw Design, uh, sheet number A one, A two, A three, A four, A five, A six, A seven, A eight. The ASB Design Group dated, um, yeah, four fifteen, twenty.
Yeah, that one I added.
Okay.
I think that's everything that I see for pitching in, Ellen.
All right.
So I think that with the, with the motion, the recitation of the exhibits and the condition, motion is made by Ms. Jacobs, is there a second?
I didn't hear the condition, what was it? I didn't.
Oh, the condition to clear up any overgrow within thirty days of filing.
I'll make a second to that.
Motion made and seconded, and I will, oh, you know what, I should have done this first. Hey, uh, Jen, who is the, the next to vote from the associate side of the ledger?
Uh, Steve Sidi.
Steve. All right, well, Steve, we will start with you. Motion made and seconded.
Okay, um, I'm a yea.
Thank you, Steve. Ron?
I am also an aye.
Ms. Jacobs, your, your vote?
No.
Ms. McIntyre?
Yes.
I am an aye. So the ayes have it, the variance is a vote to four, two, one. Thanks very much, Mr. Bayers. Thank you, Mr. Boyle.
Thank you all, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
With, with, I appreciate the, the vote, but if, if I come back to the building inspector with a smaller house, would that, would that, is, is that, do I have to come back in front of the board if it's? if it's a smaller home?
I, oh, I think so.
Okay.
Well, Paul, are you sure, because he's decreasing the CBA, so he approved for 23%, if he comes back and needs 15%, would he need another variance?
Well, the, the variance is for the CBA, which will not change.
Correct, correct.
So the, what the applicant is asking is, hey, hey, Mr. Chair, you just had a vote and approved a variance pursuant to the plans and exhibits, you know, supplied with the application, if we change any of the exhibits that were supplied with the application on which your vote was based, Mr. Chair, do I need to come back? And I certainly appreciate the detail that if you go smaller, then, you know, there's something intuitive about saying, well, why would I need to come back if I'm actually going smaller than what we asked for? And since I don't have the answer to that question, sitting here before you, Mr. Boyle, perhaps we can go one of two paths, is we can perhaps postpone, well, actually just held the vote, so.
I don't want to postpone it, no, I don't want to postpone, I just.
Then my suggestion would be to perhaps have Mr. Byers either do a little research or call town council to see what the effect could be. They're very well made administrative amendment to a decision that could occur.
And Paul, I think what happens is, you go to the building inspector, and if it's a minor, if it's a, depends if it's a, considered a major or minor modification, the minor modification, we went through that, I've been through that on your end, too, so we can always talk to Paul about that, Paul Hudson.
But it doesn't, the board determine if it's a minor or major modification, so you'd have to come before the board, right?
Yes, yes. You are correct, Ellen.
All right.
So if it's a smaller house, and he comes before you guys, and you decide, well, you know, it doesn't change anything really, other than making the house smaller, then you would decide, you're right, if it's a minor modification, or major. If it's major, you have to reapply and start all over again.
It's a crazy process, because if we determine that it's a major modification, you're sitting at a meeting, and then you're going to be another month behind, because you have to apply again.
Yeah, you have to start all over, exactly. I'll talk to Brian off here, but yeah, we'll take the 4 to 1 vote.
All right, well then, thank you, Mr. Byers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, okay, bye-bye.
Great night. For the board and everybody else, that appears to be the end of the agenda, so if there's a motion to adjourn, sure would love to hear it.
I move that we adjourn.
I will second.
Oh, boy, who was the first, I couldn't tell.
That's Mike.
Thank you, Mike, and the second was?
Ron.
Thank you, Mike, and Ron, I will go, Frank?
I, yes.
Thanks, Ron?
Yes.
Alexandria?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
I'm an aye, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.